Order, call roll.
Mayor Querem?
Here.
Councilmember Swanson?
Here.
Mavory?
Here.
Gomez?
Here.
Newman?
Here.
Okay, but please stand and let's recite the Pledge of Legions. I pledge allegiance to the legions. The duty of life in the United States of America. And to the Republic of the United States.
We stand. One nation, one nation, under God, indivisible, total, at liberty, and justice for all.
Okay, do we have any, uh, start options tonight? Do we have any public comment? Anybody on, uh, public that would like to speak?
Uh, yes, I would.
They just need your name?
Uh, Sean Harden.
Okay, Sean, go ahead.
Um, uh, thanks for having me, first of all. Uh, my name's Sean Harden. I'm the general manager for Peel Motors in Princeton. Uh, Peel Motors has been a business for sixteen years in Princeton. Um, Greg and Bob Peel bought the dealership from the Faber family, who had owned the dealership since nineteen sixty-eight. Uh, between the Faber family and Peel, the business has been generating tax dollars and employing local families for the city of Princeton for fifty-two years. Um, you know, we currently sell Chevy, Buick, and GMC cars, trucks, and SUVs. Peel currently employs fifty-seven full and part-time employees with an annual payroll of about one point four five million dollars and an annual real estate tax of approximately seventy-six thousand dollars a year. Um, I just wanted to thank everybody in this time of uncertainty for continuing to support local business and just let you know some of the things we're doing to help keep our customers safe. Um, we built plexiglass partitions for all the sales, service, parts, and body shop jobs to help practice social distancing while utilizing materials from all the local businesses, um, that we could get the materials from. Um, we've had parts, service, sales, and body shop all sanitized with cloggers and continue to clean all touch points. We are offering at-home pickup and delivery for oil changes and all other service appointments with pay over the phone for convenience. Um, we also offer at-home test drives and even do paperwork for customers, um, at their house if it helps them feel more comfortable. I just want to, to thank everybody for, for letting me speak and urge everyone to continue to, uh, shop local businesses and continue to support local businesses in any way that they can. Um, I think it's important that we continue, um, to keep our tax dollars local and shop local. So, thank you very much.
Well, thanks, Sean, for coming on. I know it's, uh, it's awfully tough, uh, you know, out there in your business as well. I know that, uh, are you, uh, you guys, uh, as far as selling cars, you're doing that by, uh, appointment only? Is that how you're handling?
Yeah, by, by appointment only.
Yeah.
Yeah, for, for car sales. I mean, service, you can come up, you know, you can, um, you know, just stop in, but as far as car sales, appointment only.
Okay, oil changes and all that, but as far as just driving.
Yeah, you can still use the Quick Loop service, um, and if you have an emergency, still, you know, come in if you don't have an appointment for other, uh, services, but as far as sales, uh, by appointment only.
Okay.
Well, I know it's been pretty, it's been pretty good so far. I mean, it's, it's, uh, um, you know, we've still been doing a, a good business, which is great to see.
Yeah, that's, that's good to hear. I know it's, again, it's, I know it's how tough it is out there. Really appreciate you coming down and, uh, and speaking and, uh, glad to hear things are moving, moving well for you out there.
Yes, I appreciate it. Thank you.
We agree with you, uh, everybody, help us to shop Princeton and, uh, continue to shop Princeton first before.
Yeah, I mean, uh, it, it, it's important for small towns to, uh, especially small towns, to, to utilize that and utilize, um, you know, everybody staying, you know, staying local as much as they can.
Okay, thanks, thanks for coming on.
Yep, thank you.
Thanks, Sean.
Thanks, Sean.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Sean.
Yep, thank you.
Do we have, uh, anyone else who would like to, uh, take this high during public comment? Okay, so we're, uh, at this point, we are gonna go ahead and, uh, open a public hearing with, uh, the comments on the application for the Downstate Small Business Sustainability Program. And I'm gonna turn it over to, uh, Tricia, our city manager, as it's time, and she'll take it from here.
Okay, um, as I mentioned at the last meeting, the city of Princeton is partnering with the Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunities for the Downstate Small Business Stabilization Grant Program, which makes, um, grant funding available to certain COVID-nineteen pandemic-impacted businesses that employ between one and fifty-eight people. The grant program provides up to twenty-five thousand to the community businesses located within the city of Princeton that have been economically impacted by the pandemic. Purpose of the grant is to help businesses make up to sixty days of employee and operating costs. Businesses eligible to apply must be private, for-profit small businesses that are considered nonessential by the governor's executive order and must have had the same owners since January first of twenty-seventeen. Because of the nature of the fund, uh, being that they're grant money, the city of Princeton is required to coordinate the request of these funds on behalf of the businesses located within the city limits who submit completed application material.
Okay.
We, at this point, we have received five applications, um, so I'll call this, this potentially be the first round of these applications. And the proposed award amount of the applications were, um, locally published as required by the grant application. Um, the hearing today is to, uh, accept any public comment regarding the program or the application specifically. Uh, the five applications that we receive include, uh, Four and Twenty Cafe, Guys and Gals Salon, Bruce Jewelers, Gillian's, and Spoon Restaurant and Bar. So each of those applications have submitted for twenty-five, up to the cap, which is twenty-five thousand dollars of operating expenses. And each of their application packets have been available online because of the COVID, uh, situation. Um, if somebody wanted to make an appointment, they could, uh, a, a publisher, they could come into City Hall, uh, to make an appointment and look at the application. So, I guess at this point, uh, we need to ask if there's any public comment on these applications.
Anybody wanting to public comment?
I don't have any technical comments at this time.
Okay, so, uh, lack of public comment, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing on the application for the Downstate Small Business Sustainability Program. We'll, uh, go ahead and move on to the approval of minutes. We'll go to Commissioner Newman.
Thanks, Mayor. Uh, I move that we approve the minutes from our regular council meeting on May fourth, twenty-twenty. Second.
Motion's been seconded. Any, uh, comments? Call roll.
Councilmember Swanson?
Aye.
Mavory?
Aye.
Gomez?
Aye.
Newman?
Aye.
Mayor Querem?
Aye. Now we'll go to the approval of invoices, uh, and city clerk counsel.
Okay, uh, for this period, we have in the Department of Accounts and Finances, we, uh, to, uh, invoices totaling fifty-nine thousand eight hundred seventy-six dollars and six cents. In the Department of Streets and Public Improvements, we have invoices totaling seventy-eight thousand seven hundred ninety-three dollars and ninety cents. In the Department of Public Safety, we have invoices totaling two hundred ninety-one thousand four hundred thirty-four dollars and fifty-one cents. And then Department of Public Property and Utilities, we have invoices totaling six hundred and two thousand three hundred twenty-five dollars and ninety-nine cents. There, all council members present have confirmed the reviews of all invoices and now are submitted for disposition.
I move that we approve the invoices as presented. Second.
Motion's been seconded. Any comments? Okay, call roll.
Councilmember Swanson?
Aye.
Mavory?
Aye.
Gomez?
Aye.
Newman?
Aye.
Mayor Querem?
Aye. And now we'll go to, uh, regular business and city clerk counsel.
Okay, next on the agenda is the first reading of ordinance O dash twenty dash double oh six. This is, uh, amending city code to set standards for solar energy collection. There, all council members have reviewed this ordinance and it is submitted for disposition.
I move that we advance ordinance O dash two zero dash zero zero six to the second reading. Second.
Motion for seconded. Comments? People might wanna take off, they can start this off.
Okay, so this ordinance is, uh, a, a culmination of, um, detail that came from the plan commission months ago. Uh, and then, uh, we began to get, um, inquiries about, uh, citizens in the area that are, uh, in the process of, um, purchasing and/or erecting solar arrays on their houses. And so we realized that we had to kind of skedaddle to get, um, up to speed on, um, what's required to safely put a, um, an array on a house and how, how, how much the city should be involved in it. We got, uh, during our research period, we discovered that our, uh, our, our own liability carrier uh, had suggested that we have the owners of the solar arrays, um, make sure that they get a, uh, liability policy for a million dollars that names the city of Princeton as additionally insured. And at first, the people who were putting these arrays on their houses or have a project in mind, uh, accepted that, but when they, uh, checked with their insurers, uh, they found that, uh, their insurer would not write a policy, uh, to, um, a million-dollar policy to, uh, have the city included as additionally insured. So, we began to realize that this is not an industry standard as we were once, um, suspecting it was. Uh, so we kind of went back to the drawing board to do a little bit more research on how these are being handled in the industry. What we discovered was that there's a lot of inconsistency in the industry, at least at this point. Um, I would tend to think it'd be fairly mature with, uh, um, a lot of the solar, uh, uh, applications that have taken place in sunny states like California and Arizona. But, uh, we weren't able to really discern what was appropriate and what was common for municipalities to, uh, require of the owners. And not, not everybody is a public, uh, utility either, so some of it was, was not applicable. Um, so we, we thought that we, we may have to, at least for the short term, uh, not require the million-dollar policy showing the city as additionally insured. Um, and we've kind of spread that or communicated that to, uh, three or four of the projects that are currently pending in Princeton and hoping to get off the ground here as soon as the city decides what it wants to do. I have since learned, uh, over the last week that, uh, there are policies out there where, um, or homeowners have uh, inquired and found that they could get a million-dollar increase or get their homeowner's liability increased to a million dollars as long as the city wasn't named as additionally insured on the policy. And some of those, uh, premiums are relatively modest. Um, so with that being the case, we thought that we would put it in front of the council and see to what extent the council is comfortable either, uh, foregoing the million-dollar, uh, liability policy on the part of the owner of the system or, um, demand some sort of, uh, liability coverage threshold, whether it be a million dollars or less. Um, and, and just kind of have a discussion on how the council feels about how our, our system should be protected. Now, I will tell you, uh, just to, to close up here a little bit, is that Jeff Mangrich, our electric superintendent, has said that there can be some danger in the event that, uh, one of these solar systems that are installed privately on a, uh, residential use, uh, if the, um, uh, quick release, uh, or the rapid shutdown switch fails, there could be voltage that trickles back into the city grid, which could, uh, cause outages, uh, fires, or, uh, other damage. And if one of our guys was actually working on the line at the time in the neighborhood, he, he could potentially be killed. Uh, so we, we, we're thinking that we really need to look closely at this and, and maybe you don't decide tonight, uh, if you, i- if there should be a liability limit, but certainly it's something that we need to do before the second reading on, on June first. So, with that kind of background, I guess I'll open it up and see if anybody has any other comments.
This, uh, this ordinance doesn't apply to the, uh, uh, to the, uh, liability coverage. This is essentially for, uh, uh, uses of structures, loads, and so on, as far as moving on the roof of the, of a home or a building. So this doesn't necessarily address the, uh, liability issue, is that right?
Yeah, that's correct, because I, I really didn't, didn't know what to include. I, I thought that, that, that the, the council could, uh, set a course for, uh, what limits of liability should be used, um, before we actually include it in the, in the ordinance. So, if you decide on something tonight or decide that we would do some research between now and June first and, and decide on a liability limit, we could have that, uh, in, in text form for the second reading. The other, the other thing that I, that I guess is an important point that I, I didn't mention yet is that in talking to our liability carrier, which is called Tokyo Marine, that's due, uh, Diamond Brothers, um, we have a five-thousand-dollar deductible on our liability coverage, but if, if, if we should suffer damage, uh, and the, the homeowner doesn't have enough insurance, at least at the onset, our, our liability policy would cover the damage less the five-thousand-dollar deductible. And then they would subjugate against the owner.
Pete, now you mentioned earlier that, uh, you discovered that it's possible for a homeowner to have his homeowner insurance company provide like a million-dollar rider on his homeowner's insurance policy, but that that policy can't include the city as a insur- as a secondary insurer, is that correct?
Correct. Now, what if we asked the owner to do that and then sign a document between the city and them that should damage occur that he could file a claim through his homeowner's insurance company? Is that even feasible?
Um, so you, you, you're saying if the owner damages our system, or you're saying if we owner, if we damage the owner's system?
No, I'm sorry, if the owner's system damages our grid and he has in fact, uh, was, uh, added that million-dollar liability coverage to his own homeowner's policy, could we, upon installation of the system, require that new systems, that an agreement be signed between the homeowner and the city that should damage occur that he can, he would tap into that policy to reimburse us for whatever damage the system caused us?
Yeah, that, that, that sounds like a
They can file a claim, but that doesn't necessarily mean the insurance company, uh, you know, honor it. They may, you know, there may be, um, circumstances that the, uh, insurance company would deny the claim. I mean, um, they could, they could submit the claim, but that's not a guarantee that they're gonna pay anything.
That's a logical question, Jerry, and frankly, I, I think we'd probably have to get a legal opinion on that.
Yeah.
I, I think you could get it in definitely from the homeowner, but, uh, again, collectability is a question, uh, but you could have the homeowner sign something guaranteeing to make the city whole. Whether they could or not would remain to be seen.
Uh, a, a homeowner's gonna want protection on this. They're gonna want insurance, because whether, whether they have insurance or not, if they damaged the, uh, city grid or, or caused injury or something like that, they're gonna be liable, or they could be liable. It, you know, whether they have insurance or not won't make a difference.
Well, uh, yes, you know, it's with all the, with all the solar events out west, I'm, I, I guess it's just, I'm just amazed that there isn't some insurance coverage for that. I mean, it's everywhere out in Arizona. I know for a fact that that, uh, well, big municipalities are trying to protect themselves as well, with some kind of insurance.
Are, are the, uh, ones out west all publicly owned?
Partly owned, Hector. I'm, I'm sitting on people's, uh, roofs and they're just, you know, doing exactly what we're proposing here in Illinois. But I don't know what relationship or what legal obligation they have for the municipality in Phoenix or something as an example, should they do that.
Um, is there like anywhere, like in one of those towns where you basically can go into the, uh, the city where there might be something explaining and ordering something that is related to the, the solar power that they have out there? Is that probably?
Yes, I would think that some research could be done to see what the city of Phoenix or the, or Los Angeles or some of those western counties that have solar out there, abundance of solar out there, uh, could be, could someone say?
Uh, I'll just say that we've, we've tried to get our insurance company to do that legwork for us. Um, and they, they, they actually have tried to do the, the, do the legwork. Uh, they haven't come up with anything, um, substantial yet, so, you know, poss- may, maybe we could do our own research, um, on the city websites out west or something and see what we can find out.
Uh, we have to remember too, we're kind of unique in that we have our own power company, whereas if you're dealing with Ameren or Silco or something like that, they're a, you know, private business in a different situation, I would think.
You're right.
Bottom line is we need to, you know, we need to protect the, uh, rate players and, uh, the, the race payers in Princeton against, uh, any damage to the grid from a solar, uh, operation on a home. Just, uh, uh, you know, we, we just need to, we need to follow through on that because we can't, can't leave it open.
Well, and I would, I would assume that if our business somehow, some way, our grid were to damage the homeowner's solar array, that the homeowner would demand that we compensate them fully for whatever damage is caused by the city. I would think the reverse should apply as well.
Yeah.
I would think our insurance coverage would handle that case, Jerry.
Yeah, yeah. But I would just hate to see us out there, hanging out there with not much, you know, with, with no coverage per se, no protection.
Uh, can I just say real quick, uh, Pete, I got a couple of quick questions. This is council member Mavory. So, Pete, now, I'm sure you guys have already researched the IMEA, correct, to talk to them?
Uh, Jeff, Jeff Mangrich did, yeah.
Okay, and then give us a scope of, I know there's for sure two homeowners that actually have their solar panels on their houses. How many, how many people are we dealing with right now that either have them on their house trying to get finished with the project or have applied? Are we talking four, six people, ten people? Roughly, can you lay any numbers?
Four.
Four. Okay, well, I, you know, I just don't think we have this information to act on this tonight. If you, if we pass the ordinance, a part of it, the idea for the first reading was the idea that we're gonna revisit this, uh, the next meeting with, and try to tighten down our, our, uh, our liability issue for the city side. I think that would be something we start tonight, Mayor. And the other thing, Mayor, maybe there's somebody that's, uh, called in tonight that maybe is one of these four people that might, uh, like to talk to during this time, if possible.
Yeah, there's somebody out there.
I, I believe that's correct. Uh, I don't know if you wanna do that now or if you want to, uh, wait till the public comment at the end of the agenda, but if you wanna open it now, that's up to you.
Yeah, why don't we go ahead and open it now? That way we can address any concerns. But, uh, yeah, so whoever's out there, uh, just be free to state your name and then, uh, go ahead and take off.
Yeah, I think Ellen Starr's out there. Ellen, are you, are you, uh, audio, audible here?
I am.
What would you like to say?
I'm here, yes. Uh, thank you very much for inviting me to talk, um. As I see it, as the homeowner in the mix of all this, the issue is, um, having that extra insurance, um, being, um, you know, the city of Princeton has the insured. That was the issue with my insurance company, and I think I speak for most of the homeowners, absolutely, we want extra insurance. Uh, you know, we all want to be covered and we all want to be protected. So, um, as long as the city of Princeton isn't, um, required to be the insured, I don't think there's gonna be an issue. So.
Well, I think Ellen's the question is
The city of, city of Princeton, uh, supporting solar power. Appreciate that.
Uh, Ellen, this is Jerry Newman. I, uh, thanks, thanks for joining us, Ted. Um, uh, I'm getting the impression that it's possible that if your system somehow, some way damages the city's grid and we wanna be compensated for, that your insurance company may or may not be willing to compensate us for the damage that was caused. How do we guarantee that we could get, made whole for any damage that's caused by your system?
Well, I'm sure there'd be proof, and how can they deny the proof? You know, I'm definitely gonna get plenty of coverage, additional coverage. So, whether the city requires it or not, I think it would be, uh, not, not, not in my interest to, to not do that, so.
No, you, you don't wanna under, uh,
No, and so do you have any idea what a good coverage would be? I think a million.
Gosh, no.
Generous.
I, I think so too, and I, and I don't think, I know, I have a little bit of experience of a million-dollar liability umbrella policy might cost a hundred dollars a year. It's, that's terribly expensive.
I, I will tell you that the, uh, the, the one person that approached me, uh, who said that he got a million-dollar, or he was able to up his homeowner's liability to a million dollars, uh, it's gonna cost him an extra eighty-eight bucks a year.
Yeah, yeah.
That's not bad, yeah, yeah. And I can check with my insurance company and get back with Pete if he'd like for me to.
Yeah. Yeah, that would be helpful. That would be helpful to help because, yeah, I wonder, Ellen, also, if, uh, wherever you're, you, uh, acquired your solar system of, of a national organization that might have invoices to other states and what other people are doing in terms of insurance coverage, that they could advise you at all?
Mm-hmm, yeah, I'll talk to them. Mm-hmm.
So your, your homeowner's insurance company told you that if, if as long as the city is not listed as an additional insurer, they have no problem with, uh,
Yeah, that was the, it, you is
That was the only issue with them.
Yes, yes, yeah.
So, Joel, let me ask you this for a second. Let's say that, uh, Ellen wants to file a claim and, and the claim states in so many words that her system has did some damage to the municipal's, municipalities', uh, uh, grid. Is, is an insurance company gonna say, okay, fine, no problem, we'll write the check, or is there gonna be?
Well, they'll, they'll, they'll investigate it. I mean, you know, just like with any claim, they'll, they'll investigate it if, uh, like she said, if the proof is there, if, if it, if it's, uh, justifiable, yeah, they'll, they'll take care of the, they'll take care of the client most likely to not, so. It's just, you know, they have
Oh, is there any chance that, that that could be excluded from the coverage?
Well, you know, I do know that, uh, I, I did check with the insurance company earlier today on this and the language in that policy, and I'm assuming it's the same with most homeowner's insurance, uh, company, is that, uh, the policy states that there's, there is coverage under a standard homeowner's policy for solar, uh, use and so on, and what, what could happen because of using solar power. But it's up to or not exceeding a hundred, and this gets a little technical and it's, I, I, I don't clearly understand it myself, but uh, up to but not exceeding a hundred, so long as the, the, uh, electricity or the power that's being used does not exceed a hundred and twenty-five percent of the actual electrical power used each by the residents that's insured here in the twenty-month, twelve-month period prior to the date of loss. So, in other words, uh, when, and what I was told by the insurance agent is that this is a, uh, definitely a moving target and he doesn't believe that anyone should rely on their homeowner's policy to protect them, uh, when he anticipated loss exposure could be, you know, significantly, uh, high. Uh, and what he did is he suggested that because, uh, now, I'm not totally familiar with solar power and how that works as far as our grid is concerned, our municipal grid. Um, is there, maybe you can answer this, Ellen, is there, is there, if you build up excess power, excess electricity using solar, what happens? What happens to, you know, the electricity or the power that you don't use?
Right. They said it would go back on the grid. Right, they said it would go back on the grid.
Well, that was what this agent's understanding was. So if it goes back on the grid, then how this company looks at it is that it's basically, you could be considered almost like a business because you're putting electricity back on the grid of the municipality or a private company. So what they-
Okay.
So what they do is they consider, they think that people should look at a business policy specifically for your solar.
Okay, here's how, what I understand and how it's explained to me. You can have, so they replace the meters, some meter, some models, one can go forward and backward in one meter. So it tracks the amount of energy that goes back onto the grid and it keeps track of that. And then you get that savings back when, in the winter time, when you're not producing as much. So it's for the homeowner's benefit only and it may not cover 100% throughout the year. So we're not making money off of that.
Oh, yeah.
And it would behoove us to, even if they would buy it back, it's like pennies on the kill a lot. And it takes like 12 cents to produce a kilowatt and you'd only get a few cents back. So, you know, there's, it's not the purpose of this.
Oh, yeah, and I understand. And so did the insurance, he understood that as well. Not a money-making venture, but it's the way the system is set up that that money would be, or that power would be going back on the grid. And that's why they, not that you're a money-producing business, that's not the point of it. It was just the way the system is set up. And so they prefer residents look at a business policy specifically designed for solar. And the premium on something like that would be very affordable.
Yeah, in regards to insurance, so it would be a separate policy then?
It would, it's like a separate individual business policy specifically for solar. But that's something to discuss with your agent and see what they think on those terms. This is what I got from this company. So something to consider. And again, the premium would be-
And what company was that? Can you say?
Yeah, I can. It was State Farm.
Okay. All right.
So I would just, you know, talk to your agent about that and see if that's, if they have run into that situation as well.
Mm-hmm.
You know.
Okay. Yeah, she was, they were looking into it and, yeah.
And I think regardless, I think in the end, I think something obviously can be worked out one way or the other. But the thing to look at is to make sure that it's done right and that you're-
Oh, completely.
Obviously, and that we're-
Yeah. We all want it to work correctly and no problems. And there are a number of inspections through the process. So, you know, there's a lot of little safety nets built into the whole process. So, yeah. So I will look into the insurance part on my end and get back with Pete probably a little bit later this week, depending on how, you know, availability of my insurance folks, so.
Sure. And Ellen, that's Ellen, this is Jerry again. I'm assuming that, you know, your insurance agent, if he or she is part of a national insurance company, maybe she could pursue this question, you know, out into their corporate entity for assistance to be sure that whatever she gives you is as accurate as it can possibly be. Because this is so true to us.
Right, right. Yeah, the company I have is based out of Wisconsin. I'm not sure how much experience they have with that. But the insurance company I deal with are brokers, so, you know, maybe there's another country that-
Yeah.
Yeah, great, great. So, yeah. Okay, great, thank you so much for allowing the comments and the conversation. Very good conversation, appreciate that.
Yeah, good discussion. Thanks for coming on.
Oh, yeah, yeah, it's just a process, for sure. All right, thank you very much.
Oh, you're welcome. So as far as this ordinance is concerned, I think we can probably go ahead with considering it because again, it doesn't address the liability issue. It's just more on, you know, standards on the building materials and so on and what's required there. So anybody else have any comments on that or?
No, I think we should, you know, Pete, if there's any research that I could do for you, I'd be happy to if you want to just give me some direction over the next day or two. If you want to make some calls or find out something specific, I'd be more than happy to dig into it.
Okay, appreciate that, Jerry. I'll be in touch.
Okay.
Okay, if there's no further comments, this motion to adjourn section, go call roll.
Councilmember Swanson?
Hi.
Mabry?
Hi.
Gomez?
Hi.
Newman?
Hi.
Mayor Querom?
Hi.
Next on the agenda is the first reading of ordinance O-20-007. This is an ordinance abolishing the Industrial Development Commission. Again, this is first reading. And Mayor, all council members have reviewed this ordinance and it is submitted for disposition.
I make a motion that we advance the ordinance O-20-007 to the second reading.
Second.
Motion's been seconded. This is a, you know, the Industrial Development Commission was something that was, that we had, the city of Princeton had for many years. They stopped together several years ago. So they're just, they aren't together anymore and there's really no reason to have it on our books. And we do need the ordinance to abolish it, so that's what this is all about. So if I have any comments?
I think one thing I'll mention, Mayor, is that I don't want people to get the impression that we're ending our economic development activities. It's just that it's taking a different form.
Exactly.
By being involved in other regional efforts and getting direct information from the Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity. So the economic development drive continues, it's just through a different, through a different process.
Yeah, good point. I broke that up. Any other comments? Call roll.
Councilmember Swanson?
Hi.
Mabry?
Hi.
Gomez?
Hi.
Newman?
Hi.
Mayor Querom?
Hi, thank you, Pete. And I'll go to city manager report, Teresa.
First, on my report here, you see the invitation to bid for the electric generation cooling radiator. The city of Princeton is accepting bids for the construction of an air-cooled heat exchanger or a radiator at City Hall until 11:00 a.m. Wednesday, June 17th, 2020. All contract documents may be examined at City Hall or in the city clerk's office at City Hall. The invitation to bid will also be posted on the city website as well. Any questions on that?
Teresa, what's the cost of this thing? I have no idea.
Um, I, the total cost, I think this is the one we were going to try to split it between fiscal year. I think the total cost is going to be over $700,000.
Wow, okay.
Yeah, I think Jeff Mangere said it'd be about seven, 775.
Yeah, if we do it right with our budget, I tried to work it out with Jeff. If we time it just right, we can split it with this fiscal year and next fiscal year and it won't hit us quite as hard this fiscal year. So that should work out pretty good. That way we don't have to borrow or anything like that.
Sure, perfect, good deal. Thank you. Any other comments?
Um, I want to mention just a couple of things while I have everybody on here. I did get the sales tax numbers for February, which is a quarter percent sales tax that our regular sales tax that we bring in. I just want to make sure you guys are aware that we bid for February and we are on track from what we were last year. So February still is fine, which we expected. On March, we probably should expect the same as last year because we weren't really getting impacted by COVID at that point in time. So we really won't know the COVID impact on our sales tax numbers for probably another two months, unfortunately. So we'll keep an eye on it. We know there's going to be an impact, we're just not quite sure which direction or how big that impact's going to be. But unfortunately, we won't know for another couple of months. On that topic of COVID, just so city council and the public is aware, everybody is back, the staff is back full-time, reporting to job sites, reporting to the offices, following the CDC guidelines. However, City Hall is remaining closed and the offices are remaining closed to the public. We're in the process of considering different parameters that need to be put in place before the public can be, have access to the buildings, what parameters we need to have in place, whether plexiglass or whatever safety measures we need to put in place. So we will start to figure out what those are going to be and follow what the governor's going to propose here this week, probably, and go from there, so.
Teresa, do you have a sense if people are staying up to date with their utility bills or are we getting a high number of people that are suspending payments or having problems with that?
Well, from what we're seeing, and we get an update whenever there's deposits and stuff made, from talking with the ladies up front as well and seeing the deposits, it seems to be pretty stable. And let's keep hearing otherwise, but when I ask the ladies up front, they seem to think everything is going fairly well, so.
Yeah, I'm totally impressed with our customer base, Jerry. Ever since day one when we closed, everybody has been super cooperative and very eager to make sure that their bills get paid and they're courteous on the phone. I think we've been very fortunate that our customer base has kind of jumped in and done their part to make sure that things keep moving along.
Fabulous, that's fabulous. And I think too that they know that should, you know, hard times come upon them, that we're here to help them if necessary.
Right. Thanks, Teresa.
You're welcome.
Anything else, Teresa?
Um, no. The only thing I'll have to add at some point, and we'll have to have a special meeting for this, but for the applications for the grant to be submitted, there will have to be a resolution by the council, but it can't be dated the same day or prior to the council meeting. So we'll discuss how we're going to handle that, but I'll need you to get that taken care of before I can get all the applications submitted.
Okay, sounds good. Um, under, Teresa, the report, so under mayor report, we just have a couple of board appointments.
I move that we appoint Rodney Lang and Jackie Davis to the Plan Commission Board of Zoning Appeals, both for three-year terms, ending April 30th, 2023.
Second.
Motion's for second. Any comments? Call roll.
Councilmember Swanson?
Hi.
Mabry?
Hi.
Gomez?
Hi.
Newman?
Hi.
Mayor Querom?
Hi.
Okay, we'll go to any old business tonight. Any new business tonight?
Mayor, I would, this is Councilmember Mabry, if I could just have a minute, please?
Sure.
The, I just want to compliment the street department. They started working with the quarter percent bill tax money that we've been collecting. And the street department, if you get a chance to drive down there, look, they started at the corner of South Pleasant and Park Avenue West and they're replacing curbs and it's looking good. So in the process of replacing curbs, they're also replacing these aprons that are going up into people's driveways and they're also replacing some sidewalks. And so it's kind of like a joint effort for all the things that they're replacing. And then, of course, I understand next year we'll come in with a new asphalt surface. But I just want to commend the street department on the nice work they're doing on that project. And then I also wanted to take a moment and commend the cemetery department. Our two cemeteries are looking sharp. I know Memorial Day's coming up this, coming weekend, but those cemeteries have come a long way the past couple of years. So again, I want to say a shout out to both of those entities. Do a nice job.
Thanks, Ray. You're right. I think the, I think that's going to be scheduled for this year. I think they're gonna get those curbs done. I think that's going to be done later this year. That section as well, yeah, as well as the plaza street from Peru all the way down to Courthouse. Badly needed.
And it's just great that it's being done as a unit, as a combined effort. And it really looks good because the stuff they're pulling out is 80 or 100 years old. So the things that they're putting back, hopefully it'll last another 100 years. So it's just a legacy project, a good project.
Yeah, I totally agree. Thanks for bringing that up. Uh, any other new business? Do we have anybody with public comment? Anybody from the public that would like to speak at this point? Okay, well, entertain a motion to adjourn and reconvene.
Okay, I move that we adjourn our regular meeting this evening and reconvene for our next regular council meeting on Monday, June 1st, 2020, at 7:00 o'clock at City Hall or remotely. Change of the meeting format and location other than attended at City Hall will be announced in advance. Second.
Motion has been seconded, call roll.
Councilmember Swanson?
Hi.
Mabry?
Hi.
Gomez?
Hi.
Newman?
Hi.
Mayor Querom?
Hi. This meeting's adjourned and thank you all, the public and that, for attending. So thanks a lot, everybody.
Yeah, thanks. Okay.
Have a good night.